Good afternoon to all of you joining us tonight for our candidate forum. We are super excited to be hosting the candidates for Shalane County Commissioner. But before we get started, we'd like to introduce some people helping make this event happen. My name is DeAndre Vasquez. I am a college freshman at Washington State University. And as of a couple of weeks ago, a small business owner through a marketing consultant forum, DS Marketing. Once again, I'm super excited for all of you to join us tonight. The North Central Washington Youth Voters is excited to be hosting our third Meet the Candidate Forum, where young people in North Central Washington have the opportunity to ask questions of our candidates and voice their concerns. Today, we'll be speaking with our two candidates for Shalane County Commissioner, Mr. Dale England and Mrs. Tiffany Garing, who will field questions and discuss the duties and responsibilities of their aspiring position. Young Voters is dedicated to improving voter education and awareness, enhancing young people's civic engagement, and making sure young people's voices are heard at the table. We hope that tonight will serve to answer some of your questions and paves the way for a greater representation of your voice. The event will consist of three different sections. The first section will consist of voter registration information and an overview of the duties of Shalane County Commissioner. The second section will consist of questions submitted by local young people. And the third and final section will be a combination of previously submitted questions and questions submitted live during this event. You can submit your questions live by commenting on the Facebook or YouTube livestream. Now let's take a moment to meet our moderators. Let's start off by introducing Zoe.
Hi, I'm Zoe Thomas. I'm 17. I'm a senior at Manson High School. And I believe that it's really important for young voters to fully understand what's going on in our community. And so that's why I'm excited to be part of this. I'm also a member of the Future of the Twelve, which is about getting voices into the state representatives.
Thanks Zoe, I'd now like to welcome in Isabel.
Hi, I'm Isabel Mena. I'm 14. I live in Leavenworth, and I'm a freshman at Cascade High School. Though I'm not able to vote yet, I am passionate about the well-being of my community. I'm thrilled to bring together the Shalane County Commissioners.
Thanks Isabel, I'd now like to welcome in Talia.
Hi, DeAndre. Hi, everyone. I am Talia Riddick-Waters. I too am from Leavenworth. Currently joining everybody from South Carolina, where I am getting my master's degree. I've been able to vote a little longer than my colleagues up there. But I absolutely believe and agree with them where, you know, these different positions that aren't, some of those bigger positions are just as important. And local government is really going to stand behind you. And so it's important to know, you know, who you're voting for and what you're voting for. So we appreciate everyone being here and also thank you again to our hosts and moderators and our candidates.
Awesome. Thank you all for those introductions. Now let's take a second to introduce and welcome our candidates. We're gonna get an opportunity for candidate introductions. We'll start with Ms. Tiffany Garing.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Garing. Thank you so much for having me. I think this is amazing. I grew up in Brewster and went away to college at Seattle Pacific University, graduating with the degree in Business Administration. I came home knowing I didn't want to live back in Brewster, but moved to Shalane and started my career in sales at Icicle Broadcasting, where I was promoted to Sales Manager and stayed there for about eight years. And then after, I moved on to the Lake Shalane Chamber, where I also handle sales and I am the Chief Operating Officer. And you hear my children screaming in the background. Probably. I have two little girls, one and three, one who didn't have a nap today. So sorry. My parents are trying to wrangle her. And yeah, that's all I had to say. It's nice to meet everybody and I'm excited for the forum.
Perfect. Thanks so much for joining us Tiffany. And now I'd like to welcome in Mr. Dale England.
Hi, thank you so much for putting on the forum. I'm the youngest of eight kids. We were raised in Manson, on the orchard my mom was born on. I'm a fourth generation farmer. I worked for the Sheriff's Office for 27 years. I formed a soil fumigation business to help farmers. That is still in operation, that is still helping farmers when they replant. We sold that business and then I started Lake Shalane Helicopters, which is my second small business that I've built from the ground up. I currently live in Manson. My wife of 41 years is a school teacher. And I've got six children and 14 grandchildren. And I think it's important that we keep our youth involved and provide the environment that they can grow and have a prosperous future.
Awesome. Thank you so much Dale. Well, without further ado, let's go ahead and get started with tonight's forum. I'd like to welcome back Zoe to kick us off.
Alright, so it's gonna start off with having each candidate get a minute and 30 seconds to respond. These first questions aren't, they don't go to both ways, they're just about information. So we're gonna have Dale answer the first one. And the question is, how do I register to vote? And when does this have to be done by? And you have a minute and 30 seconds.
Okay. You can register to vote a lot of ways. Right now, you can still register online. You can go to a Department of Licensing office. And when you get a driver's license or update it, you can register to vote there. Up until eight days before the election, you can register either online or go into the Auditor's Office to vote, to register in person about last week. But you have to register by the day you vote. You can also go to the Washington State Secretary of State website and download a form there that you can mail in if you prefer. But there are many ways that a person can register that makes it pretty simple. And with changes made the last few years, you can register up to the election day.
Alright, thank you so much. This next question is gonna go to Tiffany, and it is, where and how do I turn in my ballot?
Well, I know there's been a lot of talk about not mailing your ballot in. But we've been doing mail-in ballots in Washington for a long time, and we haven't seemed to have any problems. So you can mail your ballot in, or you can drop it in a ballot box. And those are located in all of the different towns in Shalane County. In Shalane, I know ours is right behind the city building, and that's where I always dropped mine. So it's really easy.
Great, that's great information. This next question is gonna go to Dale, and it is, when can we expect our ballots?
Your ballot should be coming out the end of next week, around the 16th or 18th. So you may have to, oh. And so they may not come to everyone on the same day, but it should be around the 16th or 18th.
Okay, thank you. So these next two questions are gonna be, both of you respond. The first, we're gonna have Dale answer first, and then Tiffany. And the question is, what are the responsibilities of the County Commissioner?
Well, the County Commissioners has a board for the, basically, the Chief Operating Officers of the county. They're the ones that make the final improvements on budgets, on policies, on the local ordinances that are made. They sign the legal agreements for the county. And so essentially, the three on the board comprise the boss, the head of the county of all the different departments.
Okay, and Tiffany, you can go.
You know, I will admit that when I first was interested in possibly running, I didn't really understand what a County Commissioner did. So I started attending meetings and found out that, I think most people don't have any idea what they do because it's so much responsibility. So they are managing all the budgets of the electeds as well as their county departments. So they're right now working on budgets for 2021. And then they also are overseeing all their departments. So planning and building, Public Works. They actually oversee the Shalane County Fair, Wenatchee River Park, the Sheriff's Office, the jail. And there's a lot of things you would never think. I never would have had any idea that the county had anything to do with Ome Gardens. But they do. So there are a lot of responsibilities. Then they also divide up duties of sitting on different boards throughout the county. So they make sure they're involved and that they have a voice. And some of those boards include Link, Rivercom, Aging and Adult Care, Salmon Recovery. And there's a few more. There's about nine different boards that the Commissioners sit on. So they have a lot of responsibility.
Great, that's very good to know. The next question, I'm gonna have you answer first Tiffany, and then we'll go to Dale. And it is, how will you work to ensure you are accountable to the needs and concerns of your constituents?
I think that's a really important question Zoe. I think that as a good leader, you are listening to your boss, right? And my boss would be the people. And I think it's so incredibly important that you're listening to the needs of the majority of the people in our county. And it doesn't matter to me whether you're Democrat or Republican. I will be representing all of the people that live in Shalane County. So I've been already meeting with people as much as I can, one-on-one, and hearing their concerns and really finding out what we can do to solve those problems once I'm in office. So I very much intend to be held accountable, and I think that all leaders should be. I think it's incredibly important.
Great, thank you. And Dale?
Well, you know, I think Tiffany has really hit it on the head. The citizens are the ultimate boss. They hire and fire the Commissioners. And the Commissioners have to be responsive and have to listen to each of the citizens, whether they agree with them or not, whether they like what they have to say or not. And it's important to keep in mind everyone's needs because the Commissioners have a big impact on that. When the Commissioners have hearings and things like that, there's a lot of time for feedback. And it's important that the Commissioners listen to that feedback and do the best they can for the most people at the best economic investment that they can. And just like in private business, the Commissioners have to listen, respond, and do the best they can for the constituents.
Great, thank you so much. You guys did amazing on that. We're now gonna go to Section Two, where Isabel will be moderating.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for being here. Now we'll be moving into the section of questions submitted by local North Central Washington young people. You'll have a minute and 30 seconds to respond. This first question, we'll start with Tiffany. This question's from Nathan, age 30, from Cashmere. What specific policies would you support to increase affordable housing?
That's a great question. Affordable housing is something that I'm actually really passionate about. And groups like the Shalane Valley Housing Trust have been instrumental in creating affordable housing here in Shalane. And I understand that there are several other grassroots organizations throughout Shalane County that are doing the same thing. So while I think it's important that the county supports these organizations financially, I also think that we need to be involved. We need to be involved in the decision-making. We also need to be involved in zoning. So we want things to be attractive for builders to come and actually make it easy for them to build affordable housing. So basically, an open and inviting county to come build. So we can create more, more housing, more workforce housing, which is really what is necessary.
Okay, now we'll go to Dale.
You know, it's easy to say that we would like to support affordable housing. And to do that, we need to work together, as Tiffany mentioned, with the trust. Those are great private organizations that the county can do a lot to promote, whether or not they can legally get involved with it. But in making it easier to have builders and homes built here, it's going to take some changes in the way we provide building permits. When I got a building permit a couple of years ago for a home, it took us about an extra six weeks over it took our builder to do a similar house in Douglas County. So we need to make some adjustments that we can be able to have those homes and start building them with less freight rate for the builders. Now, there are also regulations that have changed over the years that are not so applicable to Shalane County with our low cover rates. Our, it's much easier for us to afford different aspects that the regulations may not apply to us.
Okay. Alright. Next question, we'll start with Dale. This is a question from Lisa, age 26, from Leavenworth. Will you commit to insisting that the Shalane County Sheriff's Office enforce the current laws and regulations relating to short-term rentals? For example, that all short-term rentals in Shalane County located in residentially zoned areas be owner-occupied?
Part of the problem with the short-term rentals in residential areas is when there is an issue, there's no one to respond. And the regulations currently suggest that someone should be able to respond within about 30 minutes. Long time with the Sheriff's Office, we dealt with about 5% of the people 95% of the time. And it's the same way with the short-term rentals. 5% of them are causing 95% of the problems. The people that are living full-time near short-term rentals deserve their peace and quiet. The Sheriff's Office, when we did, dealt with drug houses that were nuisance houses. We were able to do it by citation. And there was a first offense, a second offense, and then there was a court hearing that would help address the problem of houses with drugs. I think the same thing can happen with short-term rental nuisance issues.
Okay, Tiffany?
I think that if the County Commissioners do pass the regulations that short-term rentals have to be owner-occupied, I will absolutely enforce that and make sure that our sheriffs do as well. The Community Development Department has moved enforcement to the Sheriff's Office. And I have a great relationship with Sheriff Brian Burnett. And I think that any rules and regulations that the County Commissioners decide on, that he will be amazing and will definitely uphold those.
Okay. Next question, we'll ask Tiffany first. This question is from Aiden, age 18, from Leavenworth. How do you appeal to people that vote Democratic down the ballot and don't see much appeal in either of your platforms?
That's a great question. I don't think that this should be a partisan office, actually. And I've had some trouble from my party thinking that I'm not Republican enough. And I don't really know what that means because at the County Commissioner level, we're not dealing with a lot of social issues. So some of the things that I gave examples of, like Ome Gardens and Public Works, you know, county roads, public safety, those aren't, you know, public safety has become more of a social issue recently. But most of the time, we're not dealing with things like abortion or gay marriage, things like that. So first and foremost, I don't think that our office should be partisan. Secondly, I think that it's important to have a woman's perspective on the Commissioners Board. There's only been one other woman before. And I think it's important that we're represented. You know, there are a lot of women in our county. And I think that it's a good balance. We have Bob Booger, who's an independent. And then we have Kevin Overbay, who is a conservative. And I would say I'm a moderate, right in the middle. And I think that's really important, that we all have differing views and that we can communicate effectively about those to come up with the best possible solution.
Okay. Now this last question will be Dale first. This is from Will, 28, from Wenatchee. Do you support mask mandates for our county? Why or why not? If yes, how would you go about implementing and enforcing this goal? If no, why don't you support a mask mandate when presently there are over 210,000 deaths in our great country?
Well, you know, I think reasonably, we look at our health and our personal responsibility. The masks that are recommended are, have two larger holes to catch the virus as it comes and goes. And, you know, there are both sides of this. I personally feel that if we use good hygiene, as with any virus that we have in flu seasons, we wash our hands, or if we're sick, we stay home. And if we feel the need to wear a mask and gloves, then we do that. I also respect that when I go somewhere, I wear a mask because there are others that feel strongly about it. And so whether or not the mask makes a difference, I think the important thing is that we use good hygiene and we're compatible and polite with each other. And that goes a lot farther than shutting everything down.
Okay, Tiffany?
You know, this is a hard one for me because I am a firm believer in people's rights. But I also am very much a rule follower. So I feel like I'm caught in between. I think that if masks are required to open up, then we all need to wear masks. I am for whatever is going to allow our small businesses to open back up and to thrive.
Okay, um, sorry, one quick thing before we finish. Dale, did you answer Aiden's question? Or did I actually miss you?
Oh, I'd be happy to. You know, in my relationship with family and friends, I believe in having a broad spectrum of ideas and backgrounds. And I don't think that we want to get focused on specific things that separate us. I think we need to focus on the things that draw us together. There are many things that, some relatives of mine that are on the other end of the spectrum, and I can visit about and walk away and still be friends. And I know there's a lot of people that have a very difficult time this time of year and being an election year, and they can shut down any opposing views. The Commissioners have to be responsive to everyone out there. And, you know, when I worked at the Sheriff's Office and when I worked in my own business, in my helicopter business, I do not ask people to fill out a form saying, what are your religious views? What are your economic status? What are your political views? Before I'll take them on a ride or deal with them.
Okay, I think that's it for my section. Now we'll be moving on to Talia.
There we go. Maybe young would apparently have not, you know, too old to have technology issues.
That's something I would have done.
So as you guys may know, this section is comprised of some questions that were submitted beforehand, but also some questions that have come through live during this chat. So again, both of you will have a chance to respond in a minute and 30 seconds. And I will go ahead and let you know when you have five seconds. So this question is a little longer. Let me know if you need me to repeat anything, but it comes from Kenzie, age 28, from Leavenworth. And she says, Shalane County is home of two of Washington State's biggest tourist destinations, Shalane and Leavenworth. Forbes Magazine recently published an article encouraging tourists to flock to Leavenworth in hordes, seeing as though Europe is no longer an option. As a service industry worker, the influx of tourism has not diminished even slightly, yet operations are loaded for establishments to 25% capacity. She's watched many of her server bartender friends contract the virus. Many small businesses are struggling to maintain an adequate staff, and we're approaching flu season. December is the busiest month of the year and quickly approaching. If elected, what can the County Commissioner do for the essential employees and tourist destinations to ensure safety, security, and well-being? And if you're okay with it, Tiffany, we'll start with you.
Okay. I think that's a great question. I think it's also really difficult to find a solution. And the reason why I say that is each city within our county has very different ideas of what safety looks like. And I think the mayor in Leavenworth is really doing what he can and to ensure safety, you know, moving all of the tables outside. I've eaten in Leavenworth several times, wearing masks. And I think part of the county's responsibility is working with the state, working with our legislators, working with our senator to best determine what we can do to help people remain healthy. And I think that, I think that it should be our number one priority, which means I don't think we should be advertising for people to come here. We're still in Phase 1.5. I think that that is a terrible use of any county dollars. And I know as for a fact that the county is not spending any advertising money right now. And I think all the chambers have also stopped. So I think that's another thing that we can do, working together to make sure that we're not inviting people to our towns where we have so many people that live and want to remain healthy.
Alright, and Dale, let's hear from you.
I, I know with the businesses that, especially restaurants and service businesses like that, they cannot afford to operate and sustain their business at 25 or even 50%. There's a reason their business model gives them the volume of business that they have because that's what it takes to survive. I, I go back to the virus. It is a very serious issue. But it is a personal responsibility to take care of ourselves. And I think if people are using good hygiene and being And I think if people are using good hygiene and being reasonable, that we can work together with these restaurants so they could increase their capacity such as they have done in Kidda County. Now, the idea that we, that someone advertised or did a newspaper, a magazine article to encourage people to come here, I, I think is, is not a good thing. I'm not suggesting that we advertise at all, but I think we can be reasonable in our openings.
Okay. Well, thank you both. Now we'll move on to the question from Teresa, who is 24, from Wenatchee. What have you done as a candidate in order to engage our local Latinx voters and hear about the most important issues they face? And Dale, if you're all right, we'll start with you.
You know, I've known Norma Guy almost for years. And she was working with my campaign to help our Hispanic voters. And we have printed some Spanish material. And in the, my orchard managing business, I deal with a lot of Spanish speakers. And we have tried to encourage the citizens that are residents of Washington to register to vote, that they can be able to have a voice and be part of the decision-making part of the communities that they live in. I think it's important for them to, to voice and exercise their rights to vote. And we have promoted that in every opportunity we have had.
Okay. Tiffany, we'd like to hear from you.
I have actually had the opportunity to attend several of the Latinx meetings, which has been really great and very informative. But I believe that, that human interaction and meeting with people one-on-one is the best way to understand where they're coming from, what their needs are. And that's what I've really been doing. I've held some meet and greets, and I've advertised those in both Spanish and English. And I have really advertised everything in my campaign in both languages as well. So, but, but fundamentally, meeting with people is what I've been doing and I will continue to do.
Okay. Great. We'll go ahead and move on to our question from Robert, who is also from Leavenworth. So in light of the appearance of police brutality nationwide, is the Shiloh County Sheriff accountable to the Shiloh County Commissioners? And what action can you take if the sheriff is not discouraging brutality? And we'll go ahead and start with you, Tiffany.
So that's tough because the commissioners are, are considered equals with all the other electeds. So while the commissioners oversee the budgets for all the electeds, commissioners, as far as I know, don't have any power to fire an elected or discipline an elected. That's just from my knowledge, and I could be wrong. But the electeds do report every week to the commissioners. They share what's going on in their departments. And I know Brian pretty well. And not only can I not see that happening, but I think that it would be, it would be something that would be quickly fixed. And I know that the commissioners would be involved as much as they could.
Okay. Dale, we'd like to hear from you now.
You know, my time with the sheriff's office, we worked very hard to interact with the community. Several of the deputies that, and law enforcement in the valley that are currently working are Hispanic youth that I helped mentor through their growing up age as a dare instructor and as a youth coach. And I think by including as many of our local minorities in our law enforcement, it gives a much better picture of the response to our community. I'm an advocate that the deputies need to live in the areas they work. We need to encourage them to be the coaches and the mentors for our youth and be involved in community activities. The deputies have a much different appreciation for the people they serve when they see them as an individual. At the same time, our citizens see the deputies as a much different individual when they see them and know them as a person. And so between training and being involved in the communities, I think that will take care of those issues.
Okay. So our next question comes from Perry, 24, from Leavenworth. And they say, sales tax deductions mean we will probably have a tight budget. What services would you cut first and which would you protect funding for the most? And Dale, we'll go ahead and start with you.
Well, the county's primary responsibility is in protecting life and property of the county. And so it goes well beyond the sheriff's office. It also includes our roads, our health departments, and our building codes, and our, all these different departments. The budget is currently about $3 million short, on the best guess. The sales tax revenue is below what they were anticipating even with the COVID. And so bouncing that budget is going to be difficult, to say the least. And my personal business experiences helps me to isolate what is required versus what is frosting on the top. I believe in a zero budget, or a zero balance budget, where you start at ground zero and you justify each of the needs for that budget. And that would be how I would work to make things balanced in this situation.
Okay. Tiffany, we'd like to hear from you now.
You know, I know sales and lodging tax is both going to be significantly down this year. Fortunately, our commissioners had the foresight to hide away some money. So there's a surplus of 11 to 12 million dollars. And of course, you don't ever want to have to dip into your savings. But I think if there's any time that you would need to do it, it's, it's now. So with the three and a half to four million dollar deficit that we're looking at for 2021, the commissioners have talked about using some of those funds that they have saved for, for a situation just like this.
Okay. So our next question comes from Ranger, 21, from Leavenworth. And Ranger asks, Alpine Lakes Elementary School in Leavenworth could not afford to rehire a guidance counselor this year. Are you committed to budgeting the resources our public schools need, including social workers to support our young people dealing with crises? And Tiffany, we'll start with you for this question.
You know, I think mental health is very important. It's something that I'm incredibly passionate about and intend to make some changes once elected. But as far as I know, the county commissioners don't have involvement in school funding. So that would be at the state level. And what's great is we have some amazing representatives who we know well and work with, and they live in our communities, you know. So I think that, that is, it, it's extremely important that they get the counselor that they need. And I would support them and advocate for them and connect them with the right people to ensure that it would happen for them.
Okay. Dale, we'd like to hear from you.
Yeah, I agree with Tiffany. The, the county doesn't fund schooling and the, the mental health at the school. However, I think the mental health issues are important. Many of the people in jail and the people that the deputies deal with have mental issues of one sort or another. And so it's very important that the county up their game on dealing with the mental health. And if that can be used in the schools that need further assistance, then I would support that.
Okay. And it looks like that actually wraps up our questions from our viewers. So I will go ahead and pass it back to Deandre.
Awesome. Well, I want to take an opportunity to thank our candidates for joining us tonight and for allowing for your constituents to get to know you and your platform and some of your stances a little bit better. I also would like to thank our moderators for taking the time tonight to be able to make this event an opportunity. And I'd also like to thank the North Central Washington Young Voters for encouraging more youth civic engagement. Before we conclude, I'll be giving you all two minutes each to leave us with some closing remarks. I'll give you a five-second signal before your time is up. And we're going to go ahead and start with Mr. Dale. So whenever you're ready, Dale.
All right. Well, you know, I really appreciate this opportunity to share my thoughts and answer questions. And I would do that at any other time that someone would want to reach out. I am very passionate about Shiloh County and the beauty, the recreation, the farming, the building, the tourism, and everything that it provides. We have natural resources here that are second to none. We have electricity that is cheaper than none. And we can, need to keep focused on how we keep Shiloh County a place that families can, can learn and grow. And so my goal is to be able to have, provide a leadership that gets us on down the road to be prosperous, to feed the nation, to power much of the West Coast, and to have a beautiful place that we can all enjoy and, and, and live. And so my goals would be to help our young families to provide the strong jobs and the available housing so that they can live and enjoy the same thing that we have enjoyed for many years. Thank you for your time.
Awesome. Thank you, Dale. Now I'll invite Tiffany to give her closing remarks. You have two minutes.
Well, I just want to say thank you for all of the questions and to the people that logged on. Dale and I have been involved in a lot of forums. And I'll only speak for myself, but these were some of the hardest and the best questions that I think we've been asked. So I'm very impressed and thank you for logging in. I, I think that it's really, really important that we make decisions today that are going to benefit the future. I want to retire here. I want my little girls to grow up, go to college, and I want them to come back home. And if we don't make good decisions today, they're not going to want to come home. And I'm not going to want to live here. We have a quality of life here that we need to protect. And I want to make sure that I'm elected and that I can help form those decisions. And I want to serve, I believe, service above self. I've been a rotarian a long time. And I think that's what we're called to do. So I would love to answer any other questions, meet with anyone who might be unsure. You can find all my information online and we can have more discussion. So thank you so much.
Perfect. Thank you both so much for taking the time to be here. We encourage all of our people watching us back home, please, 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 please make sure you are registered to vote. And we also additionally encourage you and invite you to, to vote early. But definitely cast your ballot before 5:00 PM on November 3rd at your nearest Dropbox ballot location. Thank you all so much for joining us tonight. We wish you the best of health and have a great night.